I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. If there's anyone, please make sure their cell phones are turned to silent so it doesn't interrupt the meeting. Public participation is five minutes. Just come up to the podium and state your name and town of residency. And that being said, trustee Latimer and trustee Klaus are not going to be here tonight. So this should go pretty quick since we don't have to hear either one of them tonight. Can I get an approval for the minutes from the November tenth regular meeting and the November twenty-fourth work session?
I was only at the regular meeting, I'm not at the work session.
Okay, let's do them separate. Let's have it for the regular meeting, November tenth.
I made that motion with seven minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
So you don't have enough people on the other one?
Yeah. Which is interesting because we were all at that one. But okay, all good. Correspondents, Christine's there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you weren't there?
No.
I thought you were.
Didn't you come late?
Well, you were there in spirit because I thought you were there too. And if anyone asked me, I would have, I would have, I thought you were there too.
Yeah, didn't we just sit on one of the other chairs?
That was last month. That was in, that was in October.
What's up? Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. We don't need any disturbance from the audience, please, thank you. I knew what you meant too. Sorry, Christine, correspondence, what do you have?
No, it's a pretty short list tonight, actually. We've got the collateral statements for the month of October and for the weeks of November third, November tenth, and November seventeenth. Draft copy of the November tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting and the November twenty-fourth work session have been distributed. We received a check from the town of Mount Hope in the amount of five hundred dollars for court fines for the July two thousand twenty-five court session. Fire code history report for September two thousand twenty-five has been received from the deputy clerk. Proposed New York State Volunteer Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program for two thousand twenty-six was emailed to the board members last Friday on December fifth, and there's no increase from last year's rates on that. And the proposed two thousand twenty-six fire protection contract between the town of Mount Hope and the village of Otisville was emailed to the board members on Friday. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to shorten up the already called here a little bit. Let's just bounce down here to, like, everyone has a copy of the fuel policy, I'm sorry, of the Village Joan vehicles and gas policy. I gave you a fresh copy. I'm not even going to talk about it since we're not all here. So if nothing else, let's put this first on the agenda for the work session. Just look at it, bring whatever changes, and we can talk between now and the work session. Because I have a couple of changes that I want to do or talk to you guys about, so let's take that off the list and we do business. I know we want to have a quick executive session as far as the first thing that's under motions and resolutions, so we'll do it right before that if that works for everyone up here. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, DPW report, what do you got, John?
Not too much, but I've been working on the lights for Christmas. We took the new truck at the Robert Greens a couple of times in the last week. If you recall, they've been fixed. We had some electrical issues with the lights and the plow. That's all we've resolved for now. A reminder, garbage for the December twenty-fourth needs to be moved to Tuesday, December twenty-third. It's going to be an all-day pickup. The water usage for November, Villas used an average of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine gallons per day. The prison used an average of one hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-one. Roof at the wellhouse is all done, well cleaned up, came out really good. Frank filled out the certification for mileage for the chips program for next year. Cintas finally got back to me about the buyout. They wouldn't give me a price on the buying the uniforms out, but he did give me a thing saying that we could cut our uniforms in half down to six, we would be responsible for cleaning them. And they would still say the same thing, if one of them got ripped, they would replace it, free charge through the program, and that would be thirty-six dollars a week.
Get something in writing from him?
I have something on there.
Perfect, just give it to us, we'll talk about it during the work session, and if it makes sense, we'll make it happen.
It took several weeks for them to get back to me.
I, I figured if you called someone and said you're canceling the contract, that for sure they were going to do something, but I don't know.
When I called and told them that, it still took six days for somebody to call me back.
We're figuring out what they wanted to tell you.
Option A or option B, so maybe you have option B right now. Okay, that's fine.
That's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you to the guys for decorating Village Hall and getting the tree ready. I'm glad our tree turned on, the Patriot Tree in the park looks awesome.
Main Street looks wonderful.
Something new, a little twist, I like it.
I wanted to try something different.
Your full-timer is working full-time now.
Yes, he's full-time, everything's working out really well. He did well in the storm the other night, so.
And just to tell everyone else, and obviously, we'll, I have applications, I'm going to put in Frank's box, I talked to him earlier about it, for your part-time positions. We have them, well, let's interview this week, next week, whatever we got to do. And again, bring that to the work session, and we'll get whoever you need started.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Do you guys have any questions for DPW? You good?
No, no, they're doing the, they're doing the job, they should be doing it, it's coming out great.
Tamametal, Carrie?
Our recreation department is working on some winter activities over winter break. So far, they've put out flyer for Monday, the twenty-second, from eleven, oh, sorry, eleven-thirty to five, I believe it is, eleven-thirty to five-thirty. They're doing a movie workshop at the youth center. It's a drop-off activity, so you do need to register. Pajamas are encouraged, a little pajama party. And then the following Monday, the twenty-ninth, it's a non-drop-off, they're doing kids' bingo from eleven to two. You don't need to sign up for that. We are, the town is in the initial stages of planning a fall festival for September of this year. It's anticipated that it will run Friday, the eighteenth, through Sunday, the twentieth. We are working on establishing a planning committee for that now. We did meet with the Lions Club the other day about incorporating their fair into that, I met them yesterday, actually. We walked over the layout. It would be moving up to the football area, the park, not on the football fields, but the parking lot. So we think it'll be a good event to involve all the local organizations. At the bicentennial, we had a lot of the local groups were interested in having another event multi-day. So we think this could be a good option for everyone, and it'll hopefully alleviate some of the issues before that we had with the fair as well. And it does matter for everybody. So anybody from the village is interested in being on the committee? Okay, John, I'll put you on my list. We will need to, I mean, we are planning to fireworks, but we'll have to look out another location because we're... Okay, because we're in the firework location now. That's it.
Already in my mind.
Okay, perfect.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Kurt did reach out to me, he wasn't feeling well, he wasn't at the Patriot Tree lighting yesterday, so we tried to stay our distance from him yesterday too, but he wasn't able to make it here tonight. As far as the fire chiefs report, here's what I have. They had a lot going on. Obviously, we had our Christmas tree lighting Friday night. Santa drove all around. I answered one person that was over in the town as far as Santa going down the road. They, I just want to say this, they try their best every year that they do this to put out a list, to get it out there to everyone that possibly wants to see Santa, but this particular weekend was busy. He was at the firehouse Friday night, obviously Saturday doing this, the run, and also on Sunday for the pancake breakfast. So I am sorry if some people didn't get to see him. But the firehouse did follow their listing as far as what we had put out or what they had put out, we had shared. And I think it went great. That being said, I'd like to thank everyone involved. Christine, her husband, ran it, I guess you could say. I mean, we definitely helped out tremendously, setting up, the setup crew. I mean, I'm going to miss people here, so I apologize, but...
Oh, he had, he didn't do that.
No, I know, there was a mixture of people. I always thank, I always thank Santa and Mrs. Close every year, yes, yes, yes. As Frosty, we had the Grinch, and we had a couple of other people as elves. So I'd like to thank everyone on behalf of the firehouse, or on behalf of the fire company, and obviously on our part for the fire department. I think everything went very well. Pancake breakfast was busy on and off, so that was good. And I think it turned out as a good weekend, so.
Right, and I just want to say that Maureen Coppola and Ken Coppola did probably eighty percent of the setup of that firehouse before I even got there. And we, if it wasn't for those two sticking on the committee, we probably would not be having this tree lighting. And so they're really, really big help.
Yes, thank you. I knew I was going to forget someone, so I don't like to put a blanket thank you out there, but next year I'll get names and we'll list them, so, all right. Moving right along here, trustee reports. Diane, what do you have? We'll start on your end.
Not too much. ZBA meeting last week had been canceled because it was the day of the snowstorm, so they will not be meeting until next month. Planning board is scheduled to meet tomorrow night, and each of those boards has one active application in front of them, so. The ZBA hasn't actually met with the applicant yet, but they have the application, and the attorney's been reviewing it. As from the amount of seniors, just want to publicly thank the mayor for offering to provide a box for our luncheon tomorrow so that people can contribute to the Toys for Tots. Hometown helpers, we'll be doing our last event of the year, and that's our point seta and sweet treat delivery. That's supposed to be next Saturday. And mainly to tell Christine, Liz will be dropping off the plants on Friday here. So we'll just need to keep the heat on a little bit more than we normally would in this room. It doesn't have to be hot, but, and then we'll turn it back down again Saturday once we leave. Community advisory board for the prisons will be meeting, I think we're back on schedule, in January. So if there are any issues that need to be discussed, make sure between now and then you get with me, and we can talk about that. The only other comments is about small businesses. I think everyone knows by now, the hardware store, it has been, is under new ownership. And I would just encourage everyone to stop in and meet them, and, you know, introduce yourself and welcome them to our neighborhood because it's, it's nice to see a young couple like that becoming involved, and we should have some real longevity here. And the sale of Nine Main Street is still pending, but from what I've been told, the new owner intends to continue the current uses, so will be a liquor store and rental pizza venue. So there won't be any major change there other than the people who are running it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Diane. Lance, what do you got?
Not much. Did everybody know that Deckers Hill in the park is open, old sleigh riding, the freezing cold, and the joyous stuff? And all our parks open all winter long. And bring your dog for a nice walk in the Veterans Park. That's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, let's start off with a big thank you to Heidi Phillips, who's sitting in the audience for the newsletter. I didn't realize that it was after the last meeting, so thank you for that. I love the way it turned out. I forgot to print something off tonight that I want to talk about, so I went through the newsletter, and I'm about to read off what I'm about to read off, so thank you. Reeds Across the America is coming here. I do like to advertise this because I think it's kind of pretty awesome that it's brought here by the Knights of Columbus. They host it, and it's right here at Holy Name of Jesus Church this Saturday, the thirteenth, at two o'clock. So anyone that wants to be involved to help lay reeds, please show up at the church. There's a little ceremony, it doesn't usually last that long, depending on how cold it is, but there's a little ceremony in the beginning, and then from there, they start laying reeds, so.
What time is it?
Two, two P M.
Two, thank you.
That's Saturday. Sunday, Operation Toy Train, a little bit of schedule difference, change. Instead of going to Port Jervis like we did last year, we kind of convoyed up there. We took the fire department, we took the police department, we took DPW, and we all kind of convoyed up to Port Jervis. This year, we're going to go down to Walk Hill over near Lowe's. Just something to throw out, which I told Tony from the fire department, I was going to throw this out. I'd like to meet here at four o'clock on the dot. I'd like to load up all the toys that we have and be out of here by four fifteen and head down there. The train, that's its last stop this year is in Walk Hill. If you don't know why, you can read it online, but the train is going to be there from four oh five to five twenty. They're going to unload all the toys off of the train that they collected throughout the county, and they're going to be putting them onto trucks, and we're going to kind of be involved in getting down there and unloading and seeing how it works firsthand, I guess. So anyone, anyone from the public that wants to be involved in that, you can always drop a toy off here, we're still collecting toys. We have three boxes, another half a box out in the foyer, so hopefully we're going to be pretty well set like we were last year. And we'll be, like I said, meeting here at four o'clock. The only other thing that I really want to add was during one of our meetings, I, I believe it was our last board meeting, that one of the councilmen from the town of Mount Hope came in, Jim Jennings, and talked to us about possibly bringing the fair back. So I just want to tell you how that conversation went with myself and the town supervisor. We met with Jim, Jim was the only one there that we met with, we kind of threw out some different ideas. And where we're at right now with it is, they would be completely off of the fields. As, as Carrie said, from the town, they would be up onto the top parking lot, the football parking lot. They have a generator, so they would be taking care of their own electric, not that that would matter because it's not on our property anymore. But that being said, I do want to hold off talking about Burger Field tonight only because we don't have a full board to fully discuss it. But I definitely want Christine to move that to the next work session to talk about. I would like to put a policy in place where it's only used for sporting events, and I'm willing to listen to all of you about it to see how you feel about that. That brings me up to the meters that we talked about, the electric meters. If we're not bringing something back, I think we need to figure out what's the most cost-effective to take meters out so we're not paying, and then have an electrician come in and run wire to kind of connect those boxes if it makes sense. Okay, wow, I just skipped a lot, believe it or not, even though that was a little bit. How's your mitigation plan? What do you have for that, Christine?
So I think I sent it out, the corrections that she made. I sent that out a week and a half or so ago. What she had said was that once we were, we said they were okay, which I did tell them that they were fine to me, that she would do a new PDF, but I have not received that back. I checked in with her again today, and I still haven't received the PDF back, so.
I saw your email, okay.
So I'll get it out to you as soon as...
Is there a certain date that's due back to them by, or I don't, I didn't see it, but...
She didn't give a date, they didn't give a date, just as soon as possible.
Well, as soon as they possibly send it to us, we'll possibly send it back to them, that's fine.
I didn't even realize this myself until those emails that came back is that MHE was actually subcontracting with somebody else who was doing this. So the lady who ultimately prepared this was not even from MHE Engineering.
All right. So, wow, moving right on through. Public comment. Anyone from the public have something to say? Come on up then.
Mary Beth Ruseppa, Highland Avenue, this is coming Sunday from seven A M. to noon at the Pocatello Firehouse. We're doing breakfast with Santa. There's going to be a fifty-fifty, a small turkey tray. It's a joint venture between the fire company and the ladies auxiliary. Prices are ten dollars for adults, five dollars for children of five and older, and five dollars for seniors. I believe the price for seniors, I believe the seniors are start at sixty, at age sixty. It's going to have pancakes, eggs, sausage, bacon, orange juice, coffee, tea. And copies of the flyers for you, Brian, to put up.
Got it. Okay. Anyone else, public participation? All righty. What do you think the fastest way to do this is? Do you want to go through the other stuff? Approve the bills, approve some of that stuff, and then go into executive session? Or do you want to just go into executive session now and just get it over with?
Do you anticipate any, any action being taken, or is it just a, just a discussion?
It's just a discussion, but we'll have to vote on the contract.
Right. All right, so go through the rest of the stuff and then...
Okay, I'll just leave that part out. Okay. Let's see. Board resolutions. This one is to approve January first, two thousand twenty-six through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, the New York State Volunteer Firefighter Cancer Benefit Program. And this is the enhanced plan at a rate of one hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents per firefighter, and to authorize me to sign the proposal for coverage. Can I get a motion?
I think the motion I read by the mayor.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Vote on that?
Yes, I got it, hold on, I'm going to do it. Diane?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, though. Okay, let's see. Board resolution to pay for the epoxy floor coating at the firehouse bay, bays in the amount of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars, and this will be taken out of the fire building capital reserve fund.
Make a motion that that resolution be adopted as read.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Diane?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We're going to the other side?
Matt, we have a board resolution.
Okay. Do you want to read these?
Do you really want me to? I will, if you want me to, or...
If you feel they need to be read, do they need to be read?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, then don't read them.
Everybody's got them, you can all look at them.
So basically, all we're doing is we're moving, we're moving some money, we're moving some money from reserves and stuff over. Okay, can I get a, a motion to approve the bills, general fifty-one thousand eighty-one dollars sixty-nine cents?
Wait, you didn't vote on the board's modification.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I didn't read, you didn't read them, but you're doing these for approval.
Okay. Sorry, I was skipping ahead. Okay.
Make a motion that the budget modifications be adopted as read.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
As printed.
As printed.
I'll print it, I'll second.
On the back of the agenda, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Diane?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Okay, moving on. Can I get a motion to approve the bills, general fifty-one thousand eighty-one dollars sixty-nine cents, water sixty-three thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-four cents, and fire two thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents?
Any more to repair bills I read by the mayor?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss a contractual agreement?
So...
Second.
All in favor? Just to let the audience know, the camera stays on while we're in there, so.
It's in this one, no, this one is... Diane second, Diane...
Diane first and Lance second. There's only three, there's only three of us here.
Okay, jump in. I did, okay. You didn't hear me?
No, I was...
Do you need me, Brian?
I would like to hear, it's a budget question.
Need some cookies. Jump in.
Oh, the cookies look good.
Mine's doing the same thing, I hope so. I kind of messed with it, but I got mine.
Yeah, looking at probably somewhere in the neighborhood of seven, eight thousand dollars.
Listen, mom just bought me furniture, I got some fourteen thousand.
At least seven, eight. Thirty, thirty-five.
Still burning wood? No.
He doesn't sell anymore.
Well, that's fine, you see.
He's selling the dump truck.
Anything you want, I'm sorry, are you two, anything you want to put in the time capsule? We have it.
I know. I think we should put some pennies in it.
Yeah, that's true.
The last year.
Actually before.
I know.
The marker still hasn't come in, it's not, we can place that. But the time capsule's in by my desk, we have two, we told them down.
Yeah, that's what you say.
So did you just hear Brad waiting in the oven again?
Nobody got to it, and I didn't say nothing about it. Okay, I won't bring it up anymore.
Steve, what do you think you have, you want?
So, you all ready?
I can come up to eleven.
Having a big swearing party? You'll do fine.
Which is firework idea, John?
I was looking, going to have to move it across the street. I'm going to do, I have a distance finder, so I figured out where, do you stay on the, staying in the parking lot? I picked the farthest one, we have to be minimum with three hundred feet.
By the old, by the old pump, is the old dog, right?
Yeah, somewhere in that area.
Or even down, but there's a track, a little on that, too.
Yeah, probably, that's, the only thing is, when we're shooting the fireworks off, you're going to have to have the roof shut off now.
Because you're shooting across the street.
Yeah. No.
I didn't know. I was headed up, but the other way, but it'd be too close to houses, they go down, put up a soulful, they have like, here too close to houses.
Then we have to worry about clean up, and stuff like that.
They're not very big, as you saw.
They were trying to tell me that...
I can't think of any, you know, we haven't covered. No, I'm just trying to think of what you're talking about.
But they bought the parking lot.
John had a idea, he needs to, he needs to walk away.
They stopped making them.
I've been trying to find the points for twenty twenty-five, most of them sold out yet. They said they have next year. How is that possible? What's the bad deal, they don't come up with it next year?
So when I was... Would it...
As long as you bought it before they bought the parking lot.
Would it cost them making nickel? That'd be the next thing they go. Would it cost?
Survey or go back up, because if they are deciding to put guardrails in, they can lock your driveway like that.
You want any from two or three?
Would it cost thirteen cents to make a nickel?
Yeah, they're not very, they know you have one. Very glad you found that penny.
Drive that was...
I don't change them someplace.
We were doing with Ketchum, because Ketchum...
Yeah, they could always just, I know somebody who has gold shovels.
Yep, we do.
You've never just, don't move outside, you know what I mean?
And Ketchum's...
Yeah, I emailed them today. I don't know where the marker was, because I posted email, you have proof of marker.
Village and Shirts Company didn't want the quad to go to the parking lot.
I mean, I wasn't worried about placing the concrete down this year anyway, because that would be too late with the ground cells anyway, but where is it? We paid for it.
Oh, yes, we can. I said, well, I said, here's my attorney's phone number, that's my attorney, because that's my guy.
Probably wouldn't have wanted to put it down till it settled anyway, but...
We'll work something out, we'll put a gate up, and I said, you know what, you know what time, when it gets frozen? Can't come here, it's a week ago.
They're going to be the same, though?
They're going to be two, three, five in the morning.
I think we're, yeah, yeah, on that side. It's going to be the same as... Not going to be the same as... I don't, I don't, intentionally make the voice sound like they're... No.
Because that may be...
I wasn't sure where they were shutting it down.
See, I think the places, they get, how to get away with... They ask for a donation. You don't have to give a donation, it's up to you, and they can get away with...
Pension.
As long as it's a donation...
So I work for myself forever.
Would be appreciated.
Well, that's why I thought you would contract, you know, how they do the seasonal stuff.
You're down some money, money.
I'm two years old, sixty-seven.
Car trying to use on a bad...
Pension and full social security.
So there's a line that...
It'd be fine, it'd be fine.
Excalms.
Right. But see, that's what people are really like.
Pennsylvania, Jersey, you can subcontract a plant down there. So I think maybe that's the...
Oh, that I didn't know. I see this, I mean, I see the signs for New York State all the time, but they're looking through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That I have a problem with.
Yeah, exactly.
They're not, they're contractors, though.
Well, that's why we're not...
It looks like seasonal position.
Yeah, it's seasonal.
So that makes it a contract, to me, that's contracted work.
No, it's seasonal, they hire seasonal drivers, just like the village.
And I always find them out because they didn't have kids one year, years ago, and they have an armpit.
But they're, they're actually assured on the state.
Oh, again, but I, I mean...
Are they, are they all there?
Because I did that when I did computers. I worked for them, but that's what it's like. But I was working for them, they were paying me, but I... We should be able to use the... Community thing, right, keep close.
But they're way. They hire.
Light towers.
Just for the winter.
Yeah, I just wanna, um, figure, I'm going to have to talk to our insurance agent, too, because there's a lot more. More new contracts, right, I mean, all that.
When I was on the union.
I don't have any idea.
We finally got to, to, uh, it used to be you have to be there ten years to be vested. Our new contract.
I think of an online system. There's some things that were easier.
Well, I did my ten years.
It'll be a little bit easier to lay out.
I have.
They do have one for some.
I might have lost tire.
I would put the rides closer to the football field.
I'd rent a part-time if I wanted to, but.
That way, when they walk up that road, they gotta walk through.
Yeah, I think we were probably thinking that because.
If I retire at sixty-seven.
Well, I don't know how many rides, they're gonna talk to ride companies, I don't know how many rides they have.
Penalize, penalize.
She thinks we could fit all the rides and the others up in there, I don't really know what we can.
But you have to, we said the taxes aren't.
Like if you're standing in the football field and you're like.
But like, if you're doing this now.
Going down on the grass, like toward the memorial tree and stuff. Or even back toward the soccer field.
Something piddly.
We're gonna dig in to ride.
Seventeen.
Yeah, so we think we're gonna have them on a conduit and move electric out there.
You have to pay two, two dollars for every dollar.
Every dollar, I mean.
Some of this would be easier for us, because we're gonna be digging anyway, might as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Through the vendors, just at the rides, the whole amount of.
Well, that's what they like, used to like to try to do down there, with so, they're just impossible to do it.
Watch the board deck, first you can see it all, and then, of course, when you pull it on the left, on that side, it's gonna be splash, and bathrooms are, too. So we wanna try to keep it, and then figure out where the best ways to put the stages and stuff. It's just, it's just new.
What? Actually, we always try to tell everybody, everybody was in the airplane in the first couple of years down here. Nobody remembers.
And it just, and it just goes.
What we went through thirty years ago, when we first started the fair. We went through a lot of growing pain, a lot of, a lot of new changes like this, to get to where they were.
Yeah, if we could keep everything on the.
It's actually a three percent cap.
Or what's it, chip hardship for a parking lot, that would be great, because you wouldn't have to work.
I'm gonna put it in terms.
Other things like tying down the vendors is a little harder, but.
Yeah.
They have that, but.
Only rate for eighty thousand pounds.
All that stuff, but then we could keep both of that off.
You know, a hundred thousand easy, because it's how.
It's a little harder to stick a tent, maybe put the tent right outside with the.
Type of thing, they, they play around with numbers.
It's, it depends what it's for. Be more condensed, be more open, depending on how we do it, so we'll see a little bit.
They won't interfere with me, because when I understand.
Give her what's that.
Football movement.
I mean, I, I don't think from the mission, either way, they would have to have left for the weekend anyways, but down. I think it's really the best of all, like, coming back.
Wouldn't that wait?
The one major community.
No, because the wait is not here.
And then the houses are bothering. What you're throwing in the house is you're not.
That's like going across some of these bridges, these five ton bridges.
It's really kind of a.
All that way on the bridge, you know?
I had, I had to take the excavator.
No dust, no.
That excavator, nine sixty, it's a big machine.
It really shouldn't be much damage at all. The one thing that's, that's what the boys love, figured out.
I went across them bridges on five.
We were doing the fireworks and stuff, wanted to figure out whether we're putting the camping trailers for the rides.
Can't go that way.
Because I told her, I said, yeah, I can't. Probably not right there, I'll have to go.
No, the bridges, they're ten ton, twelve, once.
Somewhere, you can get the grass behind it or something.
They had to go by the grass behind or.
Ten ton or twelve ton.
Across the street somewhere.
You know?
You know, when it's. A lot of smaller communities do have campers, like parking lots. Yeah, that's where they never have.
Yeah.
Yeah, my brother lost the parking lot, it's good, not gonna hurt.
Early, early.
But she's just gonna try to get Sherron, get their available, get their available for your contracts.
Much more than they'd like to check, because they're good.
But she wasn't sure they're available on the farm.
They don't have the wait that you think they have.
Right, right, right.
Well, it depends, what's the date here?
It's all deferred.
So it's September eighteen.
How long it is, I mean. You might have ten ton on it at one moment.
Okay.
This year, the one later they called gentleman's, every day, it's a seven for eight, so we had to move it out, you know, because. Because last year, it was earlier.
Those, you know, those.
The only thing that's gonna interfere, which is not to, is the county.
Kind of fair, they're calling me.
County weekend, alright.
And we're not to a parade.
Right, yeah, so. I think I work out.
I know, I know, kind of parade.
Yeah, it's gonna work out better. Yeah, Sherron should be usually.
There's still a ramp in the fall.
Do they go down south?
They go down south, I talked to, I was talking to the one and I. Usually they're trying to get out here by the end of September, all depends.
Hopefully, yeah, I mean.
But they have a location, they know.
Different program there, Jack.
I mean, we'll say, I think it'll be a good thing, so it might be that we had, which we love, but you know, is, um, the cheese festival, we don't really go up, and they have rides, they really have their own vendors, they have more like Rockford, North Jersey, that we went.
Escort service.
The day after, we went to Sunday, right, and they have like four different vendors.
Yeah, so then you run into Connecticut.
So come and they will share some vendors with.
If you're going. Honestly, doing fireworks and stuff like that, is it gonna be better?
Where I was told.
Because it's not around fourth, July, July's gonna be busy next year.
Yeah.
If you still do something for the country celebration that weekend.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's gonna be a bit of a.
Yeah, I don't know. I've been driving, running, putting it all my life, trying to get out of it.
Like, I mean, if the fair is not doing them, that'd be yours, and then you have to lease that out, that's it.
But the money is.
Well, they.
Well, they do it, it definitely doesn't matter.
Right.
When I decide to sell my business.
Although.
But if somebody's got.
State.
I don't know.
How much you want to spend, they could, see, we could do fireworks in our car, as long as they're classy.
Down to fifty, something thousand a year.
Well, it's close, it could.
I don't know, they do not.
We used to send them all to the.
They do all their expenses, who knows?
Three different low.
If you're gonna go to class, which is a heavy consumer.
What did we spend last year?
You spent, like, ten thousand?
What did I spend a little ass?
Well, back then, it was.
I don't know, we don't have a budget, I asked her the budget, I said, we don't, we haven't even approved it yet. I mean, I was going to, but.
Thing got changed, the contract got changed. So, but now, now you're ten years on it.
If you make the money, we'll set, we'll buy it wholesale, we'll set it on.
I got a pension, social security. Go find a freaking triax.
Well, there's a lot of military.
Right now, we're just starting.
Well, everybody thinks, everybody thinks, you just go to Pennsylvania and buy them and set them off anyway, John.
Which are, which are, all the claims, where.
Think out west.
I could get them out of, oh, my contacts are out there.
There's some, there's some spots out west, fifty-five thousand a year.
No, a lot of money there. That doesn't, I'm not looking for the warm weather, I don't care, the cold weather don't bother me. So.
We'll have one less person to harass us, though.
I was thinking that, I know, that's sad.
Unfortunately, but. I didn't know, you're sick.
I know, you never know what might happen.
Yes.
How old is he? He'd be like seventy-five, right? Think him and my father was cool.
He's a couple years younger than Charlie.
Charlie would have been.
The governor for Pennsylvania.
So, he turned seventy-five, eighty, new guy.
But him and my dad, they, they knew each other, they went to school together, they're all, him, Charlie, they're all.
It makes more sense than some of the people here to make sense, you know what I'm saying?
But I think everybody gave like, uh. Started managing. Nate Chauvin, what a professional wrestler. Never had a problem. He became the governor of, what was it, Minnesota?
Minnesota.
And did well.
He was forty-five, fifty-three.
That Walt guy, he's freaking out.
I saw you three years older than my dad.
He, um, he was seventy-three, seventy-two. He's ten years older than I am. I went on the.
I'm trying to leave it there. I know. Get to the moment, yeah.
It's like I was all down past. I would say. And.
So I texted him, I texted him.
So I was down here talking. Well, when you speak to me, I'm letting them know. I know you can be a partner, but it's just like when I'm in the apartment. He says, oh, we talked to do about it, but like, he doesn't have a truck, yeah, but my house.
We got a truck, just don't have plow.
Yeah, but it's like those, those types of things, I want them to come from the factory, practically, to carry them. I mean, the aftermarket things are okay, but.
Well, if you have like.
It's just weird, you know what I mean?
If you have a good, somebody who's been established, yeah.
My last truck, I had that Mason dump, putting on my Mason dump, I never had any problems with it.
Terrible, terrible. I will tell you, I, I watched on TV, John, do you ever pay attention to this one thing? So I don't know where this was, but the plow would go through one of the streets, Rushmore Island was another plow.
You know what, it's really not that.
I don't.
It's not a big deal.
Okay, can I get a motion to get out of executive session?
I'll make that motion, then we come out at seven forty-two.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. No, well, we're just gonna roll into what we were skipped here. Board resolution to approve the January first, two thousand twenty-six through January, or through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, fire protection contract between the Village of Otisville and the Town of Mount Hope as presented, to authorize myself to sign the contract.
I make the motion that read by the mayor.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Diane?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay. Closing comment, do you have any?
None, everybody have a happy holiday.
Okay, I have one closing.
We're gonna see each other before that.
Well, we're gonna see each other, but the audience might not. That's right. Uh, all, all I have to publicly announce is, um, one of our trustees will be leaving us at the end of, or beginning of January, so the end of December, beginning of January. Trustee Klaus handed in his letter of resignation to me due to personal reasons. I have, anyone that might be interested in being appointed to the board, please feel free to reach out to me, write an email, call here, talk to me, whatever you'd like to do. I hope to have a decision sometime, because obviously, we'd be running with four board members. And not that I think that that's a huge deal not to, but some of the stuff that does come up sometimes can be split as far as how we vote on stuff, and that's the purpose of a five-person board. So that being said, I just wanted to make that announcement.